You know, I like this guy who's been talking to us about that building. Just like what more he can do if we can. Brian said, "Do we want to spend $200,000 on fixing that?"
Hey, Tony.
Well, this is for the roadhouse. Get rid of that as soon as you can.
How you doing?
Fixing that wall, Tony.
So, what do you think about that place?
Should we get here with him?
Yeah, they're Seattle sounders.
Well, our first day into the year.
How you been?
You get everybody here.
Never been, but, oh, where's Aaron? I don't know where Aaron's at. I knew Mel's not coming.
Oh, Mel's not coming.
But Aaron, I thought, would be here.
He spends his time between here and Columbus.
Yeah, that's right. Really seems like he stays out there.
They are really interested in that building.
Well, just because...
Eleven months.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's just this year.
About ready?
Hey, Michael, quit talking to our attorney at Compton.
I'll flip the timer.
Yeah, we're gonna build High Point Health.
Hey, Bill, how you doing, buddy? Good, seeing you.
Okay, I'd like to welcome everybody to tonight. Actually, it's just a special session, I guess, but to have a presentation from, I guess it's gonna be from High Point Health. They wanted to come present to you guys about a concept they're working on and what they're wanting to do going forward. So, I'd like to get a, we gotta get a roll call up here, though, if we could.
Counselperson Tony Abbott.
Here.
Counselperson Aaron Cook. Counselperson Mel Davis. Counselperson Randy Abner.
Here.
Counselperson Paul Seymour, Jr.
Here.
Mayor Kelly Milan.
Here.
And myself.
Okay. So, the floor is yours, guys. Whatever you need to do.
I will lead the charge, as it were.
All right.
Well, I'll start with saying thank you very much to Mayor Kelly Milan and the council for making this time for us, because I know it's a separate session. So, we're really happy that we're able to present on this concept. So, what I'd like to do is take a quick second to kind of explain the team that's here and then our partners, as you'll learn, as we kind of go through the process. Scott Lubansky is working with our team. He is with a separate company that's helping us raise funding for this concept that we're gonna explain. And then also with us is Sarah Segrist, who's the director of our foundation, and then Paul Tidkemeyer, and Bill Ritzman, who's one of our hospital board members, and E.G. McLaughlin, who's the co-chair of our capital campaign committee, are all here on behalf of High Point Health and to help us answer any questions that you might have. And then also, as you'll see, this concept includes a partnership with Sanees. And so, Dr. Doug Flora, who's the chief medical officer of the oncology program, because this is around the cancer center with Sanees, has joined us to maybe answer any questions there. And Kathy Jennings, who's the head administrator in that space. So, they were kind enough to join us. So, thank you for coming, guys. Appreciate that. We want to be respectful of your time, so we're gonna organize this with kind of three pieces to it. One piece is, we want to talk about this strategic pillar, this key initiative that's part of what High Point Health is doing to realize its mission. And our mission is to provide quality and affordable care, to improve the health of the community, and to embody an excellence in all we do. And this piece is really to improve the health of the community, as you'll see, because this strategic pillar speaks to the development of a comprehensive cancer center. And we all know that cancer services have been somewhat available in our community through a separate organization that has now left the community, actually, and that High Point Health, as an organization, has really never actively been involved in cancer care. And yet, there's this tremendous need, which we're gonna demonstrate here shortly. And so, we want to kind of explain our vision and our hope in terms of how we want to go about improving the health of the community specific to cancer care. And then also, we have an ask. And this ask is born out of a feasibility study that Mr. Lubansky did for us. We've not only talked to the city of Lawrenceburg, but municipalities throughout our five-county market, and we're, this is a very comprehensive program, and we're going out seeking support, because, as you'll see, this is a very expensive venture. And part of our reason for being here is to ask for financial support to make this vision a reality. And so, before we go any further, what we'd like to do is watch a brief seven-minute video that kind of frames the ask, if you will. Of course, the computer went to sleep on us, so just bear with us for a second. There we go.
Usually, these guys go into sleep.
Right, Mr. Seymour? Yeah, he's down there sleeping now.
I've seen this video, I think, 127 times now, so if I fall asleep...
The monitors, are they...
We're affected by a very high rate of cancer in...
Okay. We had your AV tech in here earlier. We had it working.
It did? Okay.
No idea.
You know who it was? Was it John or Jerry?
It was John Johnson.
John. I can run down and see if John's in his office.
Paul, can you help us?
Can I help you? Me and Tony will team up on it. We'll definitely get it done, won't we, Tony?
That's it.
You wanna help us?
I have no idea what button to push.
Well, I'm trying. We just ain't getting nobody here.
I think they may have just gone to...
We got all this fiber optic stuff, and we can't get the thing to run out here to council chambers.
I guarantee you, it's something simple.
Probably. If Johnny...
No, John. Well, we have Plan B. If you think you can see the monitor from here.
Yeah, that would be fine.
Put this over, and we can watch it that way.
Johnny gone?
Yeah. Yeah.
Wait, we're watching some TV here.
There we go.
We got Netflix, Netflix or something?
Get a movie going.
Let's let them just turn the monitor on their computer around, you guys.
So, here's what we're gonna do. Can you see that? You guys see it?
Just hold it.
Progression will cross the bench.
I've already experienced with cancer when I was seven years old. That's when my father died. He was 26. Four-year-old mother at that time. He had a cancer.
You're gonna get it here.
Today, in 2008, diagnosed with multiple myeloma. My mom, she had 90s, and she had to travel up to Cincinnati treatment. It would have been great if she could have received those patients right here in our community. As an organization, we are neighbors caring for neighbors, probably well over... I care hearing all throughout the... Part of our brand promise. And most of all, we... Branding and our logo are all about organization on the rise. That's the brand promise, and it's about engagement. And we want to... People that are employees here within the... They're our family, they're our friends, our neighbors, the people...
People taking care of neighbors, people taking care. I, that compassionate care, I know people that I grew up with, wanna know that they can get their...
Hospital, and those are true content experts involved in... The economic impact of having... Make our communities possible version of themselves. The hospital and the community.
Rachel, you do not want to travel. You want care within your community, because it's a point in your life where you don't feel, don't want to travel.
Support locally. All of us just want to, all of us to do something. Hours that sense by me that... All of us to make this...
We made it work. Better than...
Why didn't he know you guys changed your name?
Oh, there we go. I'd like Karen Hornberger in here to hear that. Anyway, it's better than watching that on a phone, which was probably what my kids would have done. Anyway, let me try and explain the vision. What's clear from the video are two things in my mind. One is that cancer touches almost everybody's life. I mean, everybody, either through a family member, through a friend, or somebody, has had a run-in with that monster. And then the other piece is that, when you look at that video, you realize that, you know, through the work that we've done already on the quiet phase of the campaign, is that there's a lot of support in the community for this concept. And so, what we're really looking to do is address cancer. And, you know, for years, we've always heard that heart disease is the number-one killer in America, and that's where I come from. I'm a heart guy, not necessarily a cancer guy, and spent a lot of time in that industry. And we've made great strides in that space, and it's been through a lot of effort. And cancer's always been kind of, you know, a tougher nut to crack, if you will. And while heart disease is still the number-one killer in the nation, actually, in this region, cancer's the number-one killer. And if you look at some of the data, we live in a region, you know, at a macro level, if you think of Kentucky, Ohio, and Indiana. Kentucky is, if you wanna die of cancer, move to Kentucky. I actually live there, so I'm a little nervous about that. But they're actually number 50 out of 100 in mortality. I think the rate is, what, about 233 deaths per 100,000 or something like that?
Number 50 out of 50.
Yeah, it's a big number. And then Indiana is number 42, and Ohio's number 40. So, that's not a list that you want to be at the bottom of. And then, if you look at more of a regional level, if you look at Boone, Kenton, and Campbell County, and Dearborn County, from the data that the Greater Cincinnati Health Collaborative collects, those counties are all hotbeds of cancer. And so, it is a very prolific issue in our community. And so, the way to address it is, the thing that most people focus on when you think of a cancer center is you think of chemotherapy and radiation. Those are the two things that immediately come to mind. But in order to change the reality, in order to alleviate the suffering, in order to reduce the mortality, we need to attack it from a more programmatic standpoint, through building what we're calling a continuum of care. And what that involves is, is not just the chemotherapy and the radiation part, and those are very important parts of it, but what we really need to do is, we need to get out in front of it. We need to get out into the community and educate. We need to educate on the lifestyle, and the genetic, and the environmental factors that predispose us to cancer and make it difficult to deal with once we have it. And so, we need to get out into the community and teach people how to make better lifestyle decisions and how to understand what their risk factors are, so they make better decisions in general. And that's the very front end of this continuum. And then, from there, comes the screening piece. We now have a lot of great tools at our disposal to help us understand who, which individuals in the population are actually at risk for getting cancer, or who actually has it, or who has a precancerous condition, and get those people into treatment and into risk mitigation much earlier. The next phase of the continuum is actually the diagnostic piece. If we have screening information that would suggest that you're at risk or that you have it, then we need to make a solid diagnosis and understand what the path to treatment is, and then that being the next phase. And treatment has a number of components. A number of, a lot of times, you have to have surgery prior to getting chemo and radiation or other types of treatment. And so, that's another piece of that continuum. And then, ultimately, there's the chemotherapy and the radiation piece, and then there's the aftercare. And I think, if you talk to anybody that's had an experience with cancer, I think even though you're cured, I mean, people are still, you're always looking over your shoulder, you're always tethered to your provider to make sure that you are free of it and that it hasn't come back in some other way, shape, or form. So, that continuum of care is what we're proposing to deliver to this community. And as you can tell, it's a big, big thing. And so, that's why we've chosen to partner with Sanees, because there are things that they can bring that we, because of our size and because of who we are and where we are, would never be able to deliver. There are complex things in this continuum of care that we want our community to have access to. And when I speak to that, is we really want to leverage access to cutting-edge technologies and techniques. And some of those, just very brief examples in the interest of time, are, there are now, there's now a concept known as precision medicine, where through genetic testing and genetic counters in that screening phase, we can actually determine who's at risk for cancer and what type of cancer. And if they have cancer, we can actually customize the treatments based on what the tumors look like at the molecular level and what their genetic makeup is. And that, what a wonderful resource that is. And that's not something that we, as a community hospital, can really deliver effectively. And that's why a partner like Sanees is so important. The other piece that comes to mind is, if you're dealing with cancer, you really, truly want access to clinical trials. You really want access to the cutting-edge technologies and treatments that are out there. And the way the research world works, if we went it alone, the number of patients that we put through our mill by ourselves is never big enough to attract or gain us entry into clinical trials where we can get our community access to that stuff. But by joining with Sanees, we get into a much larger pool of patients, because they're treating thousands of people throughout northern Kentucky and people crossing over from Ohio and Indiana. And in that pool, our patients can get access to those types of treatments. And so, that's why the relationship with Sanees is so important. And then, the other piece is just the sheer magnitude of it. We're really talking about a project that's probably north of $30 million. And so, it is a costly, costly, very expensive place to play. And so, you know, there's a lot of expensive equipment, the people are expensive, so on and so forth. So, therein lies that whole concept of a continuum of care. That's really what we're on to build for this community. And the strategy, the way the strategy works in order to truly reduce mortality and reduce suffering from cancer is by doing what we call stage migration. And so, when you look at the data around patients that are suffering from cancer, the reason it's so lethal today, and so lung cancer's a classic example, the reason that it's so lethal today is because the people that we are finding that have cancer, when we find that they have cancer, they're generally at a stage three or a stage four, or maybe a stage two, but a later stage two. And what happens is, at those stages, it's not necessarily treatable. What happens is that the survival rate of individuals who are diagnosed with stage three and four, and that's over 50% of people generally, have about a five-year time horizon. In other words, the survival rate of that population is about, it's less than 5%, it's about 4.5% after five years, despite everything that we do to try and keep them alive. If we can find those people when they have a precancerous state, or if they have a stage one, chances are they're curable. And that's where we want to get to. We want to get to that piece. We want to migrate our contact with individuals, with those individuals from at the stage three, four, to the precancerous or the stage one state. And when we get there, through education, through screening, through early diagnosis, we will impact, the mortality rate in this community will impact the suffering, and we'll improve the health of the community. And that's really what we're on to do. That's the whole concept, soup to nuts. There are some other things, some tangential things that are of benefit, I think, important to you as council members, and that is that there is a true economic benefit to this. The reason it is a primary pillar of our strategic plan is, we need to participate in things like cancer care in a way we've never done before, in order to make sure that we, as a hospital, remain relevant and vibrant and an important piece of your community. And that's why we're here asking for support. So, that's a key piece. Just the nuts and bolts of it, this facility and this system of care, because it's gonna involve just more than a single facility, there'll be activity at the hospital and out in the community as well, is we're probably gonna be adding at least 130 or more high-paying jobs to the community. So, that's a clear economic benefit. The other piece is that the majority of people suffering from cancer today leave the community for care. And what we're doing is, we're proposing to build a system so that we actually attract people, and that we keep people in our community so that they don't have to leave. And we're talking about hundreds of cases a year, which equals thousands of visits, and they're bringing family members, and all these people are gonna be coming to our community, to our facilities, and staying here at home to get the care that they need. So, we think that is a really important benefit. And then, the last piece is that, you know, we're always studying our quality of play to see what it is we can do to enhance our community and our environment, so that we can attract businesses to our community, and that we can attract people to our community. And having a world-class cancer center like this, and being attached to what Sanees is building, and their vision is very powerful, you know, we think that that brings, that's a great message. It's great background that we can put out into the business community to try and continue economic development here locally. And so, in order to build this, you know, our ask is, we're hoping to get support on the order of a $5 million ask, and we were hoping to see that $5 million come over potentially a five-to-10-year time horizon. And as I said, we are out in the community making asks elsewhere, but that's our ask of the council today, is if you would consider a gift of $5 million over a five-to-10-year time horizon. And so, and with that, any questions?
I got a question. This project, is it gonna be square footage to the hospital, or mostly equipment and remodeling?
There will be square footage. We don't know if it'll be to the hospital or to a separate building. A lot of the expense is equipment. You're looking at 128-slice CAT scanner, which is like a PET CAT scanner. Those are millions of dollars. We will need to be getting MRIs, which are millions of dollars. You need tomomammography, which is three-dimensional mammography, which hundreds of thousands of dollars. So, you're really looking at millions of dollars of equipment. And then, you know, we will need to build something. What we're doing right now is, we're modeling on how to, you know, where the best place to build some of these pieces are and where to locate them. And some of them will be located at the hospital, some will be located potentially elsewhere. But, I mean, yeah, and the 30 million, and I think, a linear accelerator for the purpose of doing radiation therapies on the order of probably what, just the equipment alone, it's what, about $4 million? $4 million? But then, it costs another couple million dollars to build the vault that it actually sits in, so the radiation doesn't get out. So, these are very, very expensive toys.
You mentioned it was upwards of 130 jobs, that potentially?
Yeah, we believe that, once the system is mature and from, you know, from the people out in the community, doing the educating, getting, doing the screenings, the diagnostic work, the surgical work that obviously will be done at the hospital, and then, of course, you know, the actual chemo and radiation and aftercare, the... course, you know, the, the actual chemo and radiation and aftercare, the durable medical equipment stuff that follows along with that, all, all in, we anticipate adding between us and our partner on the order of about 130. And that's based on projections, you know. I will say, and, and this is kudos to our partner, St. East, OHC was in this community for years, and their, their organization decided to, they, they reorganized, and they actually shrunk their operation. And so they actually pulled out of our medical office building, leaving us with absolutely no options for care whatsoever for the community. And St. East stepped up to the plate, and believe it or not, OHC left on Friday, December 21st, and what, four days later, these guys were up and running in our medical office building, and are busy. And I think they're actually, they're, they're busier than we anticipated. So we think that maybe our projections from a business model standpoint are actually fairly conservative in terms of the volume of work there is to do.
I didn't realize OHC left, because, I mean, that's where my mother, we, we had her for months and months and months, and
Yeah.
It was so convenient.
Yeah, they are now, I guess, primarily located over, near the Mercy West campus, it's about 20 miles away. And they sent a letter to the patients, saying if they need anything, that's, they're going to have to go there. And, and one of the physicians graciously provided, asked for contact information for the St. East team, and, and provided that to our patients in case they wanted to stay. And I think we were surprised by the number of patients that decided to stay, because they really don't want to travel, and they'd rather get the care locally. And, and that's, that's one of our, you know, I mean, we're really focused on great care local. We want to do what we do well, and then what we, what we can't do well, we want to partner. And, and St. East, you know, we're working in a very collaborative sense, in that, you know, they, they have invested in the community, they have a box in the community, but they are bringing resources to the community that are, that, that are additive, that, that are complementary to ours, not, not competitive. So, you know, we have pulmonologists in, in the community, they don't bring pulmonologists to the community. So we're working collaboratively, so it's, it is a great partnership, and I think we can do great things for the community together. And that's why we're so excited about this opportunity.
And your, your time, timeframe for needing an answer on, on a pledge, or whatever?
Um, well, the
Today, huh?
Yesterday would have been good, but
Yeah.
But, you know, I'm obviously, you know, we, we respect what you need to do as a group to, to come to a conclusion, but, you know, we
When would you see the project being completed?
Um, I think if we can get our funding in order, in relatively short order, we're looking at probably about a 14-to-16-month time horizon. We were hoping for an, maybe a, what, we kind of talked, kicked around a second quarter, first, second quarter 2020?
Wow.
Yeah, this would happen, this isn't five years away, or three years away. This could be, you know, if we can get, if we can get this funding nailed down, we, we really want to move fast.
Now, any buildings you would be building? Would they be in Lawrenceburg, Dibberd County, or what you're, you're thinking?
Any, any buildings
But you haven't made any commitment?
Yeah, any buildings would be in Dearborn County.
Dibberd County.
Absolutely. Yeah. Yeah, we're not going to do anything outside the county.
Any other questions? Well, I, I mean, I appreciate you. I mean, I, I've seen the video
Yeah.
Before and everything, but I, I know the, the, these guys are the decision-makers on the, on spending the funds. So they, they need to hear it. I'm glad you were able to share it, and share your vision with them. We'll have to discuss, you know, if, or what, or when, you know, what kind of, you know, to help with the ask, or whatever. We'll have to discuss that. But we can, we can try to do that in a timely manner.
Okay.
And then get back, get back with you.
You're wanting $5 million over a five-to-10-year timeframe?
Yeah. Yeah, that would be, I think that would be the ask. Is, you know, I mean, obviously, we'd be grateful for whatever you guys can do, but that, that's what we're hoping for. And I, I do have a packet with some information that you can bring. I'll just leave this with you guys.
I'd like to add
Sure.
Two, two things. One, if it's possible, if you're going to make a positive decision, we're having our campaign kickoff on January 24th. I realize that's, that's just around the corner. It would be, from a fundraising perspective, and that's my role at the hospital, tremendous value, if you're going to make a positive decision, for us to be able to announce it at that. We don't need the money. We, but we, to announce it, it will help us build momentum, and help us attract other large gifts. We've got a couple of other seven-figure asks in the pipeline with other municipalities and so forth. And we're trying our best to get as much of an announcement, if you will, as we can.
Can I say something in support of Michael back?
So, I'm the doc. I'm the one who's in charge with seeing these patients in the rooms. I'm a cancer patient myself. I came from OHC, and I know those doctors have been serving this community well. I'll say the one resounding thing that impressed us when we were approached a couple months ago about this, was his entire team have begged from the very beginning, please, let's keep it. No one else is going to be willing to radiate in this community. No one else is going to be willing to take care of these human beings close to where they live. And if you've ever been through it, it's tough to get 30 minutes, or 40 minutes to another healthcare. Or you're throwing up, or you're weak. Ask here, I know that we're new to you guys. If you're not new to human beings and taking care of people the right way, we work well together. As a, as a team, Kathy and I are driving force in our true north this whole time, is to cure as many people as possible. Doc, I couldn't care less. Who was on the white coat? I used to work with you guys. I want the patient to be safe. Have to travel 40 minutes for screening studies. Scientific studies say they won't. Get their colonoscopy, they won't. Get their one. Clinical cancer screening, they're presenting with later diseases, and end up going to tertiary hospitals anyway, because now they're too sick to stay homeless. Look through this, the jobs that you bring into the area, but the real ROI for this community is the patient.
Oh, good point.
Yep. Yeah.
If we mind, if I, ZG, so we just, I gotta say something. But it's, it's almost, and, and I appreciate the comment. I've never met this, the doctor before. I've heard a lot of good things about him. But, you know, and, you know, being, you know, the banker, the retired banker, as Randy called me when I came in door, you know, and I think it's about economic growth and things like that. But, you know, to me, this is, this is, this is different than that. This, you know, $5 million, you know, it, it sounds like a lot, but if we could save one life, just one life, that $5 million, that doesn't mean much. You know, my mom, she had breast cancer. She actually died of stomach lining cancer and, and stuff. And she was 98. People say, well, she was 98. But, you know, I would have liked another, you know, I have four grandkids now, only had one back then. I liked her to see, you know, her great-grandkids and stuff. And so it's, you know, I think we, as a community, have been blessed with, with the gaming funds. And I think we've been great stewards of that. But what better, what better use of that money, just $5 million to spend on something that's going to affect not only us, but generations down the road? And, and when it came in, when, when they asked me to be part of this, and I've learned so much from Michael, every meeting, I learned something new from him, you know, I thought, I was thinking of the cancer treatments, you know, the stage four, and stage three and stage four, get those, all those terms right. But it's, it's more than, it's more than that. Now I'm thinking of that continuum of care. You know, we can, we can get people that, we can, we can find out, you know, the, it's stage one or stage two, where we can, you know, we can save those people now, just for $5 million, you know, over, you know, five years, or 10 years, what, whatever the amount is. It is just, it's really a small price to pay. And I know it's a herd, you know, it's a lot of money, and you have to go out there, the community, and, and justify it. But I don't think there's any one of you all here that haven't had a family member, or a friend, that haven't been affected by, by cancer. And I would think everybody out in the community is in that same boat. So, just wanted to
You know, I would say two things, too. High Point Health and St. Elizabeth are really great providers. I personally use St. Elizabeth myself as my family provider, and they offer tremendous service. We've never had any issues with High Point Health. Love going up there as well. I think what I would recommend, from a clerk treasurer's standpoint, is that the mayor's office, the clerk treasurer's office, get together and look at what something like this might look like over a five-to-10-year period, and then bring that back to council at the next meeting, and, and discuss it further there.
Well, let's speed it up a little bit, even more than that. We, we've got a council meeting on the 21st.
22nd, because of the
Well, yeah.
Holiday.
Okay. But that's
Yeah.
That might be cutting it too close, even. But is there any way
I think we can figure that out.
That we could get together before that, and then at that council meeting, have a vote? Plus, I'd like to see our other two councilmen, you know, on this decision. I think it's fair of them. I, I think there's a lot of support here. I don't think there's any question about that.
We could, we can definitely do something on the 22nd, even prior to the regular meeting.
All right. And you can put together some ideas, and, and I, I wasn't expecting to hear a five- or 10-year period. So I'd like to talk about that in a session.
I got, I got, I got an idea that comes right to mind. So I think we can
Okay.
That where it doesn't affect, won't affect the budget.
Well, and that, and, and that's what I was going to ask, is because of that, what I heard, let's all talk, and
Yeah.
Then we'll make the announcement, and see what we can do.
We'll set something up.
Mayor, if I could.
Yes, yes, sir.
Like all you guys, I'm a lifelong member here of Lawrenceburg and the area. And I still pinch myself when I, when I see all the positive changes to our community that are here today, because of your administration and past administrations. It's just incredible. I hope you guys feel as proud as I do to be a resident, because it's just an unbelievable change in Lawrenceburg. And all that was done by folks like you, making investments in our community. And I, I can't say strong enough, that I, I just cannot imagine a more, a better investment than we could do to help save the lives of the people of our community. We've got beautiful buildings and, and all that, and a lot of other things. This is a different ask, different investment. I truly think it is an investment for, for you guys, and, and it'd just be fantastic. It's, it, it's the biggest positive thing I think we could do for the community, that we've ever tried to do for the community. And I just certainly appreciate your support, Paul. I understand that. And I, I truly believe that there, there is support for that on, on the council. And you just can't, I, I can't think of a better investment. And I, I think for, for the people, the community, I'm a cancer survivor. We're all, we all have somebody touched by cancer. And it, this, this collaborative effort just is the right thing to do at the right time. And, and with your guys' help, I'm sure we'll be able to get it done. So, thank you.
Thanks, Bill. Well, we'll, we'll, we'll plan on, on a meeting prior to our regular scheduled meeting on the 22nd, to discuss. So we can discuss also with the other two council people. And then hopefully be able to vote on something on the 22nd. So then you would maybe have your answer by the 24th.
That would be better than Thank you.
Well, and, and just so, you got full disclosure, guys. I mean, I, I have spoken with these guys a couple, three different times, probably. And actually, they asked the mayors to do that, their little spiff. I, I didn't really know the whole thing was going on during that. I thought it was just a, what can you tell us good about High Point Health? You know, and I was doing an interview, okay? But, but then, you know, the whole thing was rolled out to me, and, and, and obviously, you know, my, my family's been, been hit with it. And, but everybody in this community's probably been hit, and knows somebody that's been, you know, have to go through cancer. And I'll tell you, when my mom had breast cancer, we, we had to drive over to, we did drive over to St. East, over at the breast center. And, but then when the lung cancer came back, we were able to go here locally to OHC. And, and that's just, because there was a lot of days she didn't, there's no way we would have gotten her 40 minutes away. Just couldn't have done it. So I, I do, and I didn't know that they moved out December 21st, but
They, they reorganized locally, and changed their locations, and they validated. Talked to St. East in four days on the, you know, the, four days right, right during the holiday, the, the time and effort it took to transition that entire office from OHC to a St. East, and it looks fantastic, and they're doing a great job.
Well, and I think the, the, the most significant piece that I've heard, and, and heard before today, actually even, was, you know, we needed to focus on the screening part. You know, that, that's the most important piece of it, I think.
Yeah.
Catch it while it's early, or catch it before it becomes, you know, when it's precancerous, catch it within, you know.
We're starting before you vote.
Yeah.
We have a, we have a team meeting with Nancy Kennedy and
Yeah.
Lung doctors. Start the lung cancer screening program regardless of what happens.
Wow.
It's a one-minute scan, covered by insurance, if you're a smoker over 55, and a cancer at St. East.
Wow.
So now we've done 6,500 of them in the last, thousand of them this year. Over, yeah, we, we, we did four or five scans, we found eight cancers, six of them were terrible.
Wow.
All those people were dead men walking if we hadn't found them. So
Yeah.
That was the first thing Michael said when we met him. We want screening, we want prevention.
Yeah.
We were challenging a lot of these paradigms, and saying, it's not good enough just to treat them once they've got the cancer. We figured that part out. It's disappointing.
Yeah.
We really want to change it. Back to these patients. The education part's great, and we'll, we'll save those people, we'll save them, well, 15 years from now. But the people right now, who need to be tested, we'll start that right away. Run it through these scanners at High Point the next couple.
Good. Okay, if there's nothing else up here, then we got a plan forward, and we'll execute that plan, and get back to yous. Thank you very much. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn here.
Second.
All of them in favor?
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Okay, we'll do that. We'll do that. I'll take it upstairs.